I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. If everyone can take a seat, we'll, I know everybody's ready for holidays and it's time to get this meeting going so we can all get out of here and go to the grocery store and do all those things that we got to do before Thursday. This is the November 24th meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville, and we welcome everyone here tonight, and thank you for coming, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. We have a lot to be thankful for because we live in the city of Huntsville, and it's a wonderful place to live. I hope you all agree with me, and we have great city administration and people who work at the city who make sure that as we're taking care of business at meetings like this, that things are done the way they should be and that we pay attention to detail. As we go through the minutes, most of you have been here before, I mean, as we go through the public hearings, most of you have been here before, and you'll have a chance to speak on any matter that concerns you, and just go to one of the microphones at either side of the room and give your name and address for the record, and we will certainly be happy to hear all of your comments. Our first order of business is the adoption of the minutes from October 27th, 2015.
Some move?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, and I'd like everyone to introduce themselves, starting with Councilwoman Robinson.
Jenny Robinson.
Carlos Matthews.
Donna Hendricks.
TJ Mears.
Gary Whitley.
Janet Watson.
Kelly Scrimsher.
Iggy Richard.
Kyle Collins.
Jeffrey Rice.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Director.
And behind the podium, we have Claudia Anderson with City Legal Department, and who will make sure that we abide by the law. Our first item on the agenda is public hearings. Item one, Dement Town Homes, a re-subdivision of lots nine, 10, and part of 11, block 51 of East Huntsville addition. Thomas Nunes is going to give us some information on that.
Dement Town Homes is located in northeast Huntsville, north of Burn Avenue and west of Dement. This property will be subdivided into four parcels for single-family attached. The two outside parcels will be 37 feet at approximately 2,700 square feet, and then two center parcels for 34 feet wide, frontage at 2,200 square feet. From the review here, you can see the layout of the parcels in question, and also the overall layout of the structures are within our elevations. So this is the front scape of those potential single-family attached homes.
Okay, so if I understand it, there are four, there are zero lot lines, and those are the four homes on the new lots?
That would be correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any comment on Dement Town Homes? Yes, would you go to the microphone and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Heather Kilgore. I live at 511 Burn Avenue, right next door to the proposed site. And my concern that I wanted to put on record is that this area has been declared a floodplain, and since I live right next door to the proposed building site, I'm concerned about any potential flooding issues onto my property, as they will be bringing in truckloads of dirt and raising the yard of that area higher than mine. And I just want to put that on record, that that's my concern, potential flooding.
I think Mr. Smith, the engineer, is here. Do I say Billy? Mr. Smith, could you go, could you talk with Ms. Kilgore and explain to her what you're doing about drainage?
We have spoken.
Oh, have you already?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to put it on record that that was my concern.
Okay, okay.
Yes, he has already addressed, discussed with me the layouts of the pipes.
Okay, okay, and, you know, I'm sure that the city department has reviewed that and is satisfied that it will work to keep the water off your property, but if it doesn't for some reason, then you please report it to the city and...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for commenting. Is there anyone else to comment on Dement Town Homes? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed.
In addition for this property, the Dement Town Homes, there is a waiver to reduce the UND easements along the south lot line of Lot 1 and north lot line of Lot 4 to 6 feet, and also reduce the UND easement along Dement Street to 5 feet. Traditional easements in this area are 10 feet.
And we're reducing from 10 to 6 on one side and...
On the south side of Lot 1 and on the north side of Lot 4, which is the northern lot here, and the southern lot, which are the two 37-foot lots at 2,700 square feet.
And then reducing to 5 feet on the, on one side, on the Dement Street side?
That would be correct.
From 10, from the required 10, so that's what we're being asked to do. Thank you, Thomas. Our next item is McMullen Cove, Old Cove Phase 5, a re-subdivision of Lot 39 and Track 1 of Old Cove Phase 3, a minor.
McMullen Cove Phase 5, Old Cove Phase 5, is a re-sub of Lot 39, Track 1 of Old Cove Phase 3, just located in southeast city, north of Little Cove Road and east of Old Codwell Place. This is essentially a part of the McMullen Cove development, and this is a minor plot, but considering there is a waiver of a side lot line, this item is before you. There is a Lot 39 that is included in the Phase 3 of Old Cove, which was increased from one acre to a four-acre track, and then the additional land around the side of the mountain was also included because that was a part of a track that was reduced in size from the overall 72 acres to, or 71 acres to now 68 acres. So Lot 39 of Phase 3 has been increased from one acre to three, and then the rest of the adjacent property that was affected is also included in this minor plot.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak regarding McMullen Cove, Old Cove? Before we proceed, Thomas, are we going to have these, this presentation back up when we get to the voting phase of our agenda?
Sure.
Okay, okay, because otherwise I was going to allow some questions while they're up. Okay, I hear no comment on McMullen Cove, Old Cove Phase 5, therefore the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase 6.
Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase 6, is a re-sub of Lot 1 of Farley Farms. This is a relayout of an overall 127 lots in the Oak Grove-Farley Farms development. This property is zoned R2B and is approximately 155 acres, and for the preliminary, there would be 14 lots created with approximately six acres for the actual Phase 6. So you had 127 lots that were redesigned, and 14 will be preliminaryed for built with your exception to vote.
Is there anyone here to comment on Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase 6? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is River Park, Phase 1, a re-subdivision of Lot 1A and re-subdivision of Track A of Highland Park subdivision.
River Park, Phase 1, is a re-sub of Lot 1A and re-sub of Lot Track A of Highland Park subdivision. This layout was approved from, by this body in October of 2014 for 228 lots. Now, this, it is approximately 254 acres. The property is located in the southeast city, east of Old Bico Road and south of Highland Park Drive. The property will be preliminary built for 132 lots, and this is a current street view of the property in question.
Is there anyone here to comment on River Park, Phase 1? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is location, character, and extent. A Huntsville Botanical Garden, a new welcome center. Do you have that online, or do we have a present?
I do not have any current presentation in regards to that particular location, character, and extent. The architect in question.
We thought Paul would be here with Matheny Goldman, and he's not, so we don't have a presentation at this time.
Do you think he's not coming, or do you think he's just late?
We spoke to him yesterday, and we were under the impression that he was going to be here.
Okay, well, why don't we just continue, I mean, we can't continue it for long because we only have one more item, but I suppose if it's all right with...
I couldn't believe that we'd be public hearing open, and you'd get to that on the second floor.
Okay, 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 okay. I think that the plans are very interesting, and I think that we definitely need to see them. So we will leave that item open and proceed to zoning, which is Item 6, and Item A, Item 6A, is zoning ordinance amendment, C1A deletion.
Yes, ma'am, this is an amendment to the farmer's market ordinance. It's a newly created ordinance, and as we were creating it, we included two districts. One of them was C1A, which is no longer a zoning district, so we're asking to remove it. We're also asking to add Village Business, C6, which is a brand-new ordinance, but was not yet in place during the creation of the farmer's market ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone here to comment regarding zoning ordinance amendment, C1A deletion? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. We will proceed to Section 2 subdivisions, and the first item is Dement Town Homes, a re-subdivision of lots 9, 10, and part of 11, block 51 of East Huntsville addition. Okay, Mr. Nunes has just shown us this, and, but he's going to get it back up on the screen again so we can, so we can discuss it and consider it and then vote.
Dement Town Homes, this is located in northeast city, north of Burn Avenue and west of Dement Street. This is a, essentially one parcel being subdivided into four under the single-family attached, which allows for 22, a minimum of 2,200 square feet. The northern parcel or lot and the southern lot will be approximately 37 feet wide with 2,700 square feet, and the center two lots would be two 34-foot frontage lots with 2,200 square feet.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. Thomas, on the lot, on the waiver reduction, this is a pretty well-established neighborhood. Where are the present UND easements, and do we know if they're being used?
They currently don't exist. There are no UND easements on this, on these earlier East Huntsville subdivision addition. There are no side yard easements. So in this case, with the reduction of the side yard, there was initially no use of those UND easements, so to reduce them for 10 allows them additional square footage for side yards in this case, because these, the north and the southern property do not have backyards, they have a side yard.
So the alley that's there now, is that just all, is that an active right-of-way, or is it a closed alley?
It would be an active right-of-way. The alley is on the, that's on the northern side.
Yeah, let me see the visual.
Give me a second, I can get to it in question. From this particular image, this is right-of-way, and their property line does not exceed this right-of-way, which is the actual alley. I do have some more recent, up-to-date images currently of today, and this is the actual standing in the alleyway, this is the rear of the lots. If you follow my cursor or hand here, the property pan is placed just outside of the extent of this image and is not within that right-of-way, and these homes on the northern side of this right-of-way do have some access for rear yards to the existing current homes. So if I go to the Google image, and this home on, I'm not sure of the street name, There are three homes here that have access from the rear yards of this right-of-way for essentially kind of rear driveways. You can't see it from this particular image. So these yards, these individuals are not affected by this right-of-way. The property stays outside of the right-of-way.
So the alley is in the middle of the street, it's not on the side. Am I understanding that correctly?
This is the street, the alleyway is in the center between both the north and south streets. It's essentially a grid system within that East Huntsville addition.
Any other questions?
Yes, I would like to ask the contractor about the wastewater runoff. If he can give us, tell us about how he plans to get rid of that water so it won't flood everybody else's property. Had to be you.
I'm Billy Smith with Smith Engineering Company, and I'm the project engineer for this, this project. This is a, is a very unique piece of property. It is in the flood zone. It requires some filling of the property to place the, to protect the future buildings in it, and it's very unique. It's an old part of town, as you all know. The water that falls presently on this property, essentially from Dement, it flows across the property on to, most of it flows on to the lady that was here prior to this time.
Kilgore.
Yes, right, thank you. We are having to fill the property. There is a two-foot wall that is being placed. This is a sectional wall, the Keystone-type walls, that is going to raise the property, the main property up, and within that, that wall, it allows us to take the water that's falling on the property into a drainage system, which we'll be piping into the, to Dement. Also, part, half of it will go into a drain, a pipe in Dement, and the other half, the northern portion, will be piped in another pipe that is, that is along the side street that will, there's a 12-inch pipe right there now that pipes into a ditch. We'll replace that pipe because 12 inches is just too small a pipe, and so the rest of the half will be contained in that. So in essence, the water, the way we're handling it is mainly with that two-foot wall that gets us up above the ground and allows us to capture the water and essentially put that water into the city system. Right now, it's not going into the city system, and this will actually improve. I don't, I don't like to call it the flood condition, because that's a different animal. It will improve the drainage condition that the lady has right now. Will, will actually help her property and her, reducing the runoff from the adjoining property and putting it into the city facility. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any other comment? I was interested in the zoning for this area. These are single-family attached, and what is the actual zoning in that?
R1C.
R1C, and that allows...
That is, that would be incorrect. R2, it is R2.
R2, R2B?
Or just R2.
R2, R2, okay. And that allows for single-family attached?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Robinson?
I'm wondering if there are any other projects like this in that area. I know that there are some on the other side of Andrew Jackson, but in this particular area, is this the first redevelopment over there?
To our understanding, I think that it is, but Jim McGuffey may have more information in regards to that.
We've not seen much development on the west side of California, north of Pratt, in this particular area, due to the flood zone has made it very challenging for builders to come in and either build on properties or demo houses to build on new properties. So this is one of the first projects we've seen in many years, from a single-family attached standpoint. There's not, there's not many or any of these in this particular area, so should be an exciting use.
It is, and it should improve the property values of the folks, or not only improve the drainage, but improve the property values as well for other folks around there, and open up other opportunities for development, for redevelopment in that area.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one last question. Based on the developer, it appears that this will be for seniors. Will there be any additional lighting improvements for this, for that area?
Will not be any additional lighting, other than what would be required for standard homes. There's no parking lot, it's just a driveway into a, you know, garage.
I think I noticed they all have individual garages.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor, please say aye.
I don't think we have a motion.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I should have had the motion before we started discussing, yes. I do need a motion, please.
Move to approve.
And that chairman, the waiver needs to be included. There's a waiver reference.
Okay, the motion, who made the motion? Would you include the...
I make the motion to approve the subdivision as including the waiver. Did we do that wrong, Claudia?
Okay. Oh, you know what, I'm, I'm, I should have had it... Okay, Madam Chairman is off base tonight, but we're about to get back on. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And just for a point of clarification, that would be for layout and preliminary with the waiver noted.
Okay, okay. Let me, let me read the motion that we voted, or that we should, I should have had read, and then we'll re-vote. The committee, the subdivision committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on four lots with a waiver on sidewalks along Dement Street. Staff recommends approval of a waiver to reduce the UND easement along the south lot line of Lot 1 and the north lot line of Lot 4 to 6 feet, and to reduce the UND easement along Dement Street to 5 feet. Ms. Robinson, was that your motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and who seconded it? Okay, was that the motion you seconded? Okay, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and I'm going to pass this back down to Kyle and, oh, okay, and ask if you will do the balance of the subdivision committee report with my apologies.
That's all right, I'll be glad to. Item number two is McMullen Cove, Old Cove Phase 5, re-subdivision of Lot 39 and Track 1 of Old Cove Phase 3, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between Lot 39 and Track 1.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, this is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase 6, re-subdivision of Lot 1 of Farley Farm. Committee recommends relayout approval of 127 lots and preliminary approval on 14 lots with a waiver on a non-radio lot line between lots 4 and 5 of Phase 6.
Is there any discussion?
I do need to ask some questions about this. I received a number of emails this week with concerns regarding drainage issues and flooding. I have gone out and visited with the homeowners out there about concerns about existing flooding and some roads that were problematic, and I guess I would like some assurance that the same problems with that road will not occur again, and that we're dealing with those drainage issues. Is there someone that could address that?
Could you address that for us?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. The project is, we've probably been working on this project, Gary, I don't know, the last three, four, or five years, something like that, and we've had various stages of development along the way. I might add, first of all, that there is a, in existence, a complete master plan of the whole project, and there has been comprehensive drainage analysis formed, performed by our firm on this project from the day one that we started on it. There is one detention pond in existence right now in the, basically the southwestern area of that project. There are two other detention ponds planned for the project, one in the northwestern portion that will be in a mountain-type pond, and all these are, when I say pond, let me say this, I'm talking about dry ponds, I'm not talking about a lake with water in them. The ponds are designed to capture water and hold the water and release it at a smaller rate. The third pond is located along the main road, wish to add a pointer, but looking at the picture, when you come in the main road and there's a creek or a drainage channel crossing that road, and right on the south side of the road, there is a proposed pond that has... is a proposed pond that has been, the area has been used as a bar pit for, for dirt. And, um, and that is, the plan is to place another detention pond at that particular location. We are currently, um, applying to the Corps of Engineer to place a, a pipe that will cap- again, act as a, uh, control drainage structure for that pond. Uh, uh, and that, that process is in, is ongoing right now. Uh, there has been, there's a subdivision with some activity down there. There's been some construction activity in that area, and I suspect that's probably raised some concern from the, uh, residents in that area. Uh, I can't tell you, uh, a lot of detail about that, uh, uh, that work that's being performed there. Uh, Mr. Gray, who's a construction person for the Hayes family, is here if you have any particular questions about that. Um, I can assure you this, though, that each stage of development, we, we, we run these calculations for every single stage to ensure that for the ten-year, the fifty-year, and the hundred-year storm, that there is no increase downstream to the adjacent property owners in each stage on it. And when, um, at, at some point, we'll have to start putting these other two ponds in as the development keeps going, especially when we get probably some commercial development at some point in time. Hopefully, they, they'll have some commercial development. And of course, that's the most damaging to the runoff that you're in because you got solid pavement and buildings on it. And that, this particular pond I was describing is probably going to serve mostly for that commercial or high-density development. It could be commercial, it could be apartments also in there, but, uh, you know, that's, uh, it, it's done either way. Uh, but, uh, I feel good about what we've done on there and our, our time we spend in here. And every time we do one of these subdivisions, we have to eat, update this study and we've, and of course, I, I don't mind saying, uh, uh, Mr. Enfinger and Mr. Hayes are notorious about changing things. And, uh, and we get a little frustrated as engineers every time they change it because we have to go back into these studies and recalculate it, and some of this work is very, very tedious and, and, uh, I love it, but it's still, it's still not fun to have to go back and forth in it. But we're keeping up with what's, this, uh, very, we're doing a good job keeping up with the water on that. I feel good about it.
Well, I think, I think the residents will be very glad to hear that two more ponds are planned. It sounds, though, like that's a pretty long-term, that those are not going in.
Well, I don't think it's, uh, long-term. I think the second pond, uh, they are, the only thing that's holding us back, uh, putting that second pond is that core permit.
Okay, well, they, they will be real glad to see that.
And that will be, uh, that will be coming, you know, in the next month or so, like that. Uh, and even the third pond probably will have to go in fairly soon also.
The, the issue with L's Road over there resulted from those underground wet springs that I guess nobody had, nobody knew about.
That's correct.
And I, and I have to give Mr. Enfinger tons of credit because the road was not under warranty any longer, and he has still done a wonderful job of responding to the needs of the residents and rebuilding all of that. So, but, but the concern is, are there any more of those springs around there that are going to cause any more problems? Is there a way to determine that or?
Well, we, uh-
You do the best you can?
Unfortunately, we, yes, you're right, we have to do the best we can. We do have, uh, a geotechnical engineering company, O M I, that has, uh, done a very thorough investigation of the whole property, and they, they've found a lot of our problems and, uh, they are solving a lot of our problems too on it, so.
So you're being proactive, given that you've had the experience with that road?
Very proactive, yes, very proactive.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, before you leave the podium, Mr. Smith, I, I just want to confirm, the, the city engineering department follows up on all of your calculations?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so by the time it gets here, those calculations are confirmed by city, by the, uh, and approved by the-
That's correct, uh-huh, that's correct, yes.
-city of Huntsville Engineering Department.
Each phase I do, I have to turn a new set of calculations in that applies to that particular phase. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, okay, I think we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase Six, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is River Park, Phase One, resubdivision of Lot One A and resubdivision of Track A of Highland Park subdivision. The committee recommends preliminary approval on a hundred and thirty-two lots.
Move to approve.
Uh, is there any discussion?
I have a question. So, if I turn on the microphone. Thomas, where this is located, can you, you had another image for this, can you show me that?
Are you speaking of, uh, a ground-level view?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Do we know where the entrance is gonna be or?
Yes, I have some other imagery. This is a, this imagery is used, um, strictly from Google Earth, which is, um, at, at least a, a year and a half dated or even more. But we do have a, uh, River Park Fire Station, and this is the current fire station that exists, um, near River Park off Old Big Cove Road. And currently where this caught, where this photo is taken is essentially the entrance. So the entrance is approximately, say, three hundred feet or more from the existing fire station.
So, do we have, have we accounted for U N D easements and that kind of thing for this or?
U N D easements right-of-way has been acquired, so on and so forth. Those are, uh, completed in the design plans, yes. And there was an adjacent, um, property that was developed across the street that was approved, um, probably in September of last year, that, uh, Overton subdivision, and the entrances line up exactly.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of River Park, Phase One, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, we still don't have the architect, do we?
Yes, ma'am, we talked to him, he's not gonna make it. He had something else come up, uh, but he mentioned to us that he can meet with each of the members individually if they had any questions about the project or wanted to see designs or drawings.
Uh, let me ask Ms. Anderson, what should we do?
It's your opportunity to either continue it, to leave the public hearing and continue it, or close the public hearing and act on it, but you do have sixty days to act from the date it's submitted to the Planning Commission from the date of submission.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, in, in terms of whether it's necessary for y'all to have the drawings in order to decide, um, I think, uh, recently, and Michelle may want to clarify this, that y'all have had a policy of now looking at this at this level when earlier it was entertained at the, at the subdivision committee level, who, and they came forward with a recommendation for a public hearing, so.
Do, do you have, okay, and I, I skipped forward on that, so we're still on Kyle's, uh, report. So why don't you go ahead and give us, we, I mean, we haven't had a public hearing, but do, do you have a recommendation?
The, the, the public hearing is currently open, so for the public hearing-
Oh, I thought, I held, yeah, I said it was open, yes.
Yes.
So we have not had it, yes.
No, that was the, I guess the committee's recommendation would to have been, the public hearing was set.
Okay, okay.
So, the, the public hearing is currently open, the options are to leave the public hearing open, it would have to be continued to the next date, the op- close the public hearing, and then entertain a motion, but you would have sixty days, whatever you do, from the date of submitted, submission to the Planning Commission to decide.
Um, I know that this project, there is a timeliness factor, and it was an unfortunate situation tonight, and the Planning Commission, many of the members that were at subdivision did have the benefit of looking at the drawings. Part of it was debuted at State of the City. If possible, I, I would like to see us go ahead and make a decision, unless everyone's really uncomfortable moving forward.
I, I, I did not attend the subdivision committee hearing, but I did see the plans, and I thought they were magnificent. I think something that the city would be proud of. I, if someone would, I, I-
Do we need to close?
I need a motion, I guess.
Do we need to close the public?
Well-
Madam Chairman, I would recommend that you either, you deal with the public hearing first.
Okay, um, then I am going to close the public hearing.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the Botanical Garden Welcome Center.
Well, Madam Chair, before we do that, it, let's, we, we didn't give the public the opportunity for the public hearing, so-
You're right.
Let's do that first, and then-
It's just hard to have a public hearing if we don't, you know, we don't have any, anything to show, but I, I will say, um, i- is there anyone here to comment? Yes, Ms. Reed. And, and I know, I know we know you, but if you'd-
Jackie Reed, of course, Jackie Reed. Yeah, I have an interest in what is going on, who owns a property, what's gonna happen, where it's located, and why are we changing on it? Because I've heard a lot of rumors going on around out there, and I think it'd be good if you had the drawing and you showed the public and you try to tell people what's going on out here before you do anything. I don't care if it is city-owned, public's gonna have to pay for it, or somebody's gonna have to. I mean, I don't know. Maybe you've got something to show the public.
Madam Chairman, question.
Yes.
Is it possible to table this to our next meeting?
Well, it, it, it is possible to table it till, till the next meeting, um, uh, but it's, I understand, uh, from Ms. Grimcher, the, um, uh, there's a time element in, in that, that they want to do. Uh, oh, do you have the plans?
So we do, um, planning staff does have the construction set, although it is typical of the architect to present their particular works.
Okay.
Um, I am not priv- priv- privileged or even know the, um, complete details of the information as far as what, um, type of, uh, material or things are that will be used, but, um, going forward for the Huntsville Botanical Garden New Welcome Center, it is located in southwest city, south of Bob Wallace Avenue and west of Patton Road. If you look at the Google imagery, um, the entrance is off of Bob Wallace, and this vacant area essentially centered from the lake would be the potential place of the location, or the location of the new welcome center. Um, I will roll out the plans to give some detail.
And then, Madam Chair, I'd recommend, and also on the Botanical Garden website, they have the images of the facility, so.
I have them here, if anybody would like to see them.
So, if Thomas can just pull that up there on that screen, then everybody can see that.
Uh, Thomas, if you could leave that, oh, are you going to hold that so, so, uh, it can, and, and so everyone can come around who hasn't seen this?
Yeah, you can show the big, pretty pictures there.
Ms. Reed, you can come up to see this. Is there anyone else here for the public hearing that would like to come forward to see this?
Say it again. H S V.
H S V B G dot org.
It, uh, the botanical, it's the Botanical Garden property, yeah, yeah, and I don't know how the D reads on that, but, but it's, you know, it's inclusive with Botanical Gardens' property. And this, if you look on, oh, you're looking up there, okay, you said, okay. Um, so, this is, this is a new welcome center, a new guest welcome center.
Go ahead.
Um, my understanding, and someone, someone else may have more information on this, I'm not a, well, I am a member, but not active of Botanical Gardens, but I understand that, um, funding is pretty much in place on it already.
You're changing it. Is it down in the-
No, no, we're just-
Just location.
This is location character and extent. All we're really saying is this is a good bid for this particular property.
It's on their property, their current property.
And you're changing it.
We're not changing the zoning, this is just a building that they will build on their property.
Yeah, I'll have to okay.
We're okaying the, yes, the layout, the design, making sure that there's enough parking, um, there's lighting since there's a parking lot, um, that it is conducive for the intended use. They, well, it looks like there's gonna be like a, of grand halls to make sure that there is enough parking to accommodate.
Scroll down, you can see the other view of it.
Oh, here's, here's another, the, okay, this is the atrium-type building.
This is a grand hall, that's just kind of table examples of what that's gonna be, this looks like kitchen here, facilities, uh, yeah, this is the, what will be happening inside of those, another little area, another little garden, Trelle Moon, yeah, looks like bathrooms, these are the stalls, here are the bathrooms, enough for men and for women, staircases, coat racks and-
There's a man and opera by Bob Wallace.
So, it's, you'd go through the entrance of the Botanical Garden and straight up the, the driveway.
It's on that website, is there, like, if, if you look at that, um, uh, picture on the screen now, he's showing with the cursor about where it is, and you see Bob Wallace up near the top, so using the same street that comes in now, and, uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Reed. Um, and you may know something more about the funding, I, I just heard through the great time.
Fifty-fifty split with the city.
Yeah, so, um, okay, it, are there any other questions regarding the Huntsville Botanical Garden Welcome Center location, character, and extent? Any, any comments?
Public hearing, no, we didn't, we're not in a muster.
We're not, okay.
Yeah, it was public hearing.
Wow. Um, any other comments? Uh, hearing no further comments, the public hearing is closed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the location, character, extent of the Huntsville Botanical Gardens.
Second.
Um, any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, zoning, do we have a zoning committee report? Uh, Les is not here tonight, so would you give us a zoning committee report?
The zoning committee report is as follows, zoning ordinance amendment, C one A deletion to amend zoning ordinance, Article Ninety-Two of the Board of Adjustments, Section Ninety-Two Point Five, Powers and Duties, subsection Ninety-Two Point Five Point Three, permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection Ninety-Two Point Five Point Three Thirty-Eight to delete neighborhood business C one A district and to add village business C district as permitted. The public hearing was held this evening.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the zoning ordinance amendment.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Michelle Jordan, would you?
I'll defer to Jim McGuffey tonight.
Yeah, board members, the first item is, uh, we would ask for a ten-year extension to Randolph School, Phase Two. This is a, a five-lot subdivision located in Jones Valley, uh, adjacent to the new school. It's vacant land that they originally platted in ninety-nine. In two thousand and five, they came before the board to ask for a ten-year extension, and they're here this year to ask for the same. The second and third items are invocations.
Um, okay, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, our next item is election of officers, and, um, the, um, uh, floor is open for nominations. Uh, should we vote on them item by item? Yes. Um, uh, are there any further nominees? Uh, hearing none, the nomination is closed. All in favor of Janet Watson for chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, okay, our next, um, next, uh, officer to be nominated is for vice-chairperson. Um, are there any further nominations for vice-chairman? Uh, hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next officer is secretary treasurer, I think we have one secretary treasurer, one secretary and treasurer.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, our next item for secretary?
I'd like to nominate Peggy Richards for secretary.
I hear a second. Uh, are there any further nominations? Uh, I hear, hear none, nominations are closed. All in favor of Peggy Richards, please say hi, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next office is for treasurer. Um, are there any nominations for treasurer?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Kelly Scrimshaw for treasurer.
I hear a second. Um, uh, any further nominations for treasurers? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor of Kelly Scrimshaw, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So our, our new, this year's officers will be Janet Watson Chairman, Gary Whitley Vice-Chairman, Peggy Richards Secretary, and Kelly Scrimshaw Treasurer. Uh, one other item of business that we, we don't have on the, uh, agenda, but we have three recently-appointed members to the Planning Commission to fill vacancies, and we need to make committee assignments for those. And I'd like to ask Carlos Matthews and Donna Hendricks to serve on the zoning committee, and, and LaFrida Jordan to serve on the subdivision committee. And LaFrida's not here tonight, if you would inform her, I'd appreciate it, yeah. Is there any further business to come before the Planning Commission? Uh, no further business, and we stand adjourned. And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, and safe.